Sorry, Ryan.
Welcome to the December 10th board meeting. Welcome to the December 10th board meeting. Mr. Goldhammer is not here tonight, so I'm going to stand in for him. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we dive into our board agenda for this evening, I'd like to introduce Mr. Hogan because we have a we have a little bit of a treat for the board tonight with regard to the holiday season. Mr. Hogan?
Okay, tonight we have Victor Sepeda-Loman, Daniel Jimenez, Ryan Storch, Max Fagola, and Holden Deeds, I'm sorry. They're gonna play Santa Claus Is Coming to Town arranged by our own Bennett Lesselrod. Enjoy and happy holidays.
Well, thank you very much, gentlemen, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Hogan, for bringing everybody in. Off to practice?
Thank you, you were great.
Guys were fantastic.
Sounds so good.
It was awesome. All right. Well, that was a nice way to start the meeting.
Can I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion.
All in favor?
Okay, Sarah, you're up. Good evening, good to see you.
Good evening, I have a couple of updates from each of the schools in the district that I would like to...
Can you move the microphone closer to you? Thank you.
Starting with Tuttle, Tuttle Avenue welcomed musician Jared Campbell, who filled the gym with music to celebrate the leadership, kindness, and positive character shown at Tuttle. Students were enthusiastic and enjoyed the positive message he gave. Leader and Me Habit Two Assembly was an opportunity to celebrate students who were starting to begin with the end in mind. Parents were invited to cheer on their children and see the connection between the habits at school and the leadership students are displaying at home. First graders did well in their Thanksgiving celebration. They shared a performance which highlighted their appreciation for the special people at Tuttle and in the community, as well as recognition toward our veterans, which allowed students to honor the spirit of gratitude. With South Street, South Street also welcomed student musician Jared Campbell into their school to listen to music celebrating leadership, kindness, and positive character. Students enjoyed this event and the positive message it sent. South Street also had their Leader and Me Habit Two Leadership Assembly, which specifically highlighted those students who were beginning to learn with the end in mind. This celebrated goal setting, planning, and personal responsibility. This event really showed the pride students felt as they grew as leaders. First graders were able to join friends from Tuttle Avenue for a field trip to the West Hampton Beach Performing Arts Center to see Billy Groats' grave. The performance was an enjoyable arts experience for students, which brought storytelling to life. Esport Elementary, Esport welcomed musician Jared Campbell as well, highlighting leadership, kindness, and character in a fun event for students. The fifth and sixth graders attended performances in November. Fifth grade saw Maddie's Fringe at the West Hampton Beach Performing Arts Center. Sixth grader Cheryl Shrek at the Center Marshes Performing Arts Center. Esport started the Seven Habits Shark Shout-Out Initiative. Students are able to get recognized by Esport South Manor staff for going above and beyond for their efforts in demonstrating the seven habits. They then get a token to visit the book vending machine, which was donated by our E T P T O. Congratulations to the following students from the month of November. Francesca Capozzi, Mackenzie Spitzner, and Adriana Di Seo, Cece Salome, Brady Hand, and Liza Sai. Sixth graders also celebrated Thanksgiving together during the annual Thanksgiving feast organized by former classroom teacher and current substitute, Mr. Marino. Volunteers prepared and served delicious food for students to enjoy over reflective conversations. Following the celebration, leftovers were donated to St. John's Outreach Food Distribution Center in Center Marshes. The event was also covered by New Schwaf. For Dayton Avenue School, Dayton Avenue also welcomed the musician Jared Campbell as well. He engaged students in songs that promoted the seven habits, leadership development, self-worth, and the concept of achieving goals by coming to school every day. The annual balloons over Dayton Parade was held. This event celebrated all the hard work and talent of students. Librarian Ms. Skidmore and STEAM teacher Mrs. Andracy facilitated lessons that guided students through the development of amazing balloons that reflected student choice and interest. A Thanksgiving food drive was held in November, as well as a No Shape November fundraiser. The bounty was shared with others in the community who need assistance. All food items were collected to the Presbyterian Church of Center Marshes. Some students, parents, and staff also gave their time to pack and deliver this food. Over $1,400 was raised through the No Shape November fundraiser. These funds were donated to the American Brain Tumor Association. On November 21st and 22nd, the junior senior high school put on, specifically the junior high, put on the performance of Newsies Junior. The evening was filled with incredible performances and music from the seventh and eighth graders. On November 17th and 18th, the seventh grade students went on a field trip to the Brookhaven National Lab. During this event, they toured the lab and B and L State of the Art National Thinkertron Light Source Number Two facility, as well as conducted their own experiment. With the holidays approaching, the junior senior high school is preparing for the Stuff is School fundraiser. They accept a variety of donations that include non-perishable food items, canned pet food, new and gently used coats, sweatshirts, scarves, gloves, and hats, unwrapped toys, and gifts for kids ages three to 13, and toiletries to support the troops. Junior High enjoyed a movie night on Friday, December 5th, and the Spirit Week for the holidays is starting next week from December 15th to the 19th. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sarah. Does anybody have any questions for Sarah about any of the events or anything? Okay, thank you. All right, next we'll be moving on to hear from Jill Sanders. I saw that she came in, come on up Jill, and have a seat up front. Press that button and make the, the microphone will turn green, we'll be able to hear you. Jill is from Cullen and Donowski, and she's gonna give us our annual audit report. Tim?
I just wanted to add, in front of our board members, there's a red folder with a hard copy of the audit and the extra class audit, as well as a cover letter from Cullen and Donowski.
Good evening to the Board of Education, Administration, and the community. This was the completion of our audit for June 30th, 2025. What you have in front of you are the documents issued as of October 24th. I wanted to say that I appreciate the time that the Audit Committee met with me on November 3rd to go through all of the contents of what you have the chance to look at in depth, ask the questions that they did. I thought we had a pretty good discussion, especially since there were some new things that were integrated into the financial statement. I wanted to talk about one thing from a presentation standpoint. So the implementation of GASP 101, which has to do with compensated absences. The Board of Education might remember within the financial statement, there's two types of reporting of the transactions. An accrual basis reporting, which includes all liabilities due from here to eternity. And then there's the modified accrual basis, which is the way the district keeps their books and records. Anytime something is budgeted for, it's charged against the expenditures portion of the budget. Any type of revenue that's recognized is then, any kind of revenue that's put forth in the budget is recognized in the year in which it's actually generated. So, implementation of GASP 101 was a reporting item, and you would note it on the statement of net position, and you would also note it on the statement of activities, and there was a discussion in the financial statements. It's a reporting number only, and what it has to do with, prior to the implementation of this, which the school district was required to do this year, the identification of compensated absences, which is amounts that are paid to people who separate from the district based upon whatever agreement they might be covered for, was calculated in a way that just looked at the terminal payment when they separated. Now under GASP 101, the number is much larger because the number includes also those days that are accumulated and used up until the time that you separate from the district. So you'll note an adjustment on the financial statement, it's a big adjustment. It's $2 million, a little bit better than $2 million. This is reporting information. The district appropriately charges against the budget any amounts that are paid out to employees at the time that they separate from the district. But because of this new auditing standard or accounting standard, you have to introduce this other part of the calculation. What's the value of the sick time or vacation time that's used? Okay, so I did want to bring that to your attention. It's something different, but it was required implementation. Two overall comments, and I think they're really important. The district has a really good internal control structure in place, and I've talked about this before, it's the checks and balances over the financial transactions. And I think you know that because there is no management letter. Okay, so typically what happens if there are suggestions by the auditor to tighten up an internal control structure, there would be a separate communication to you that would make recommendations with respect to things that we might see in the internal control structure as it relates to the financial statement. So there was no management letter. The other thing is, is that from a financial condition standpoint, the district is in good financial condition. We know that the state, under real property tax law, suggests that you not have more than 4% in your unassigned or rainy day or available funding, okay, of next year's budget. And so the district is at that 4% place, okay? And that's achieved by generating revenue over and above what you budgeted, which interest was one of the reasons why that happened, the rates were favorable last year. And there was a transfer related to the capital projects that came back into the general fund. Those were the two big drivers. And then under expenditure of your budget, so we know that the budget is watched very carefully. And so there were some savings generated during the past year. And that gives you then the ability, when you look at revenues over what you anticipate and expenditures shy of what the budget is, to go ahead and accumulate funds to have that unassigned fund balance for next year. And it's really important of next year's budget. And it's really important because in case something happens, if there were additional mandated costs or you're faced with some additional costs that weren't anticipated during the budget process, you do have the ability to look at that unassigned fund balance to take care of those amounts. The reimagined bond, so there's a discrete accounting for that in the financial statements. And so there was a lot of activity. I hope you noted when you read the financial statements that there was a good fiscal rating, okay? So Standard and Poor's gave you a double A rating, okay? And what that does then is when it comes time to borrow, you did see that you received a premium of over $3 million. So that means you have to borrow less because of your good standing. You had $3 million that was given to you, okay? And so that helps really, okay? With respect to the separate communication that we give to the Board of Education, it looks very much like a letter. If there were any issues with respect to the financial statement not being in compliance with the standards, we generally accepted accounting principles, it would be noted there, we had nothing noted, okay? We had great cooperation from the business office and the staff. So that should be noted also. What we requested, we received, you know, very timely. And all of the information made sense based upon what we had been auditing. We proposed a few adjusting journal entries. And they're adjusting journal entries that you would not typically see within the monthly transactions that you're receiving, okay? They're more audit-type accounting adjustments, so, I mean, that's good for you to know also because that means the information that you're receiving on an interim basis is good information. It does not require audit adjustment. We also, as you know, are required to issue a special, a separate financial statement on the extra classroom activity funds, the State Education Department requires this. It's a cash basis statement. And so you might note when you look at it, the various clubs and activities. There is a discrete accounting, okay, that's maintained for each of those clubs and activities. So those are audited, okay? And there's about $300,000 of funds that go through those various clubs and activities. And at the conclusion of the year, the aggregate cash balance was about $150,000. So that's pretty much the contents of my report. I don't know if the Board of Education had any questions.
Anybody have a question?
I do, I do not. Thank you for the thorough report, I want to thank, Tim, thank you and your whole team that works over in District Office. Without, you know, your leadership and the job that the entire team does in the business office, we would not be able to get the report that we got tonight. So please, thank, make sure they, they all know.
Sure will. And thanks to Chris Carlos, he's our Assistant School Business Administrator. Sean McCumber, our Treasurer, did a wonderful job in assisting and making sure we get all the information to our auditors to make this happen. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention our Audit Committee, which are four community members who actually spend a lot of time looking through this and they sit with Jill, where we do all of our audits. They review it and take the time to read it. And I want to thank Natalia Spizziakova, Bill Fox, Suzanne Shifalo, and Robert Shepherd. There are community members that spend a number of hours reviewing this to prove it, to get to this point. So I want to thank them.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good news.
Yes, it is, it's excellent. Yep. All right. All right, very excited to introduce our high school principal, Mr. Lamo, and Mr. Kaka Valley, our Assistant Principal. They are going to give us a little bit of a presentation of, the title of it is Leading in the Middle, but what's happening in our seventh and eighth grade and the initiatives that we've been working on with regard to the seventh and eighth grade as feeling like they are in a middle school, as well as the Leader and Me initiative. So, gentlemen, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Steimel, thank you Board of Education for having us and letting us share a little bit about some of the exciting things that have been happening in our junior senior high school, especially focusing on our seventh and eighth grade students. So, one of the things that, some of the highlights that you'll see here is that we are going to talk a little bit about our advisory program, our incorporation of a lighthouse team now, which is really stretched from the beginning of last year. Again, reviewing some of our teaming activities, as well as getting the opportunity to see leadership in action in our schools. I'm, we've started last year with Leader and Me and working with our seven habits. Lynn Kazinsky was there with us. Last year has continued this year. She came in Superintendent's Conference Day and was able to train all of our seventh and eighth grade teachers on Leader and Me and focusing on what's called Core Two Training, providing students with opportunities to start their own goal development. And really that focus during the time that she spent with us led to something that you'll actually see at the end of the slideshow, where you get our, to see our students really developing their own goals. So it's an exciting start for our teachers in incorporating this. And now, not only is this incorporated in our classes on a daily basis, but we also focus it in our advisory program. We, one of the things that we strove for, and thank you to Dr. Christie, Mr. Steimel, is creating that feel of seventh and eighth grade. This year, I'm sure you're aware, our eighth graders have a new home in our upstairs location above where our seventh graders are. The feedback that we've gotten from our teachers has been really positive throughout the entire time. They have shared that they feel that middle school feeling is there. The students are within those hallways. High school students aren't going into our seventh and eighth grade areas. And so it really feels like a school within a school. And having that identity has always been a goal for us here at the junior senior high school. So not only that movement, but also with some branding of what we're focusing on. They see it every day. They see those terms of, you know, responsibility, perseverance. What are the things that we can do to kind of better ourselves? And that identity is important for students to not only find around the building, but also in themselves. And they do that a lot of times through our advisory program. So, our advisory program is where we not only focus on Leader and Me lessons, there are push-ins from guidance. We have MTSS interventions for students during that time, team bonding experiences, and really opportunities to build leadership for our students during our advisory program. It's really, the team leaders have been phenomenal in working together to talk a little bit about what are the items that we, our students, need. And they build our advisory each time by creating new lessons or ideas, which they game plan during their team meetings. Those team meetings are essential to say, we really want to do something, maybe it's for the holidays. For around Thanksgiving, they did a huge service project in collecting donations for food pantries throughout the area. So again, things that they're trying to do. It is an opportunity for them to continue our growth. They have an advisory schedule that they utilize. This advisory schedule identifies times on when they're going to be addressing different items, from Leader and Me lessons to those different teaming activities, and a variety of opportunities for those kids that they'll be sharing for the lighthouse times that they're really focusing on. One example of an advisory lesson that I got to see is just how students develop what those quadrants are and what's really important and urgent, and what's maybe not important and not urgent. And for them going through their timeframe of saying, hey, where is certain things that we're doing? You know, if I'm going home and playing Xbox, where does that lie on my quadrants? And when, but compared to, I know I have a test tomorrow, where should that be? And so having those conversations, and not only seeing our classroom teachers doing it, but our social worker who's newly hired this past year pushing into those classrooms, and our school psychologists, all divvying up different lessons to build the social emotional capacity, as well as important Leader and Me lessons that we want to strive home. So these are things that are just some examples of some of the lessons that they have done in the past. And Mr. Kaka Valley is gonna talk a little bit about our lighthouse team.
Good evening, everyone. So what you're seeing on the board, we have brought to the junior, the junior high school this year a lighthouse committee, which is something that Dr. Christie was helping us with last year, and we've really put together. So the members are up there, and you can see that it's a pretty wide variety. It includes the team leads, so I would, you know, be remiss if I didn't mention Ms. Appel, Ms. Duggan, Ms. DeMarco, Ms. Rakri, who are our seventh and eighth grade team leads. We also have Ms. Anderson, who is behind me, along with a couple of our Gen Ed teachers, our guidance counselors, our school psychologists, and some special ed teachers. So it really is a pretty diverse group. And every time we have a meeting, we divvy up roles and responsibilities and work through an agenda of what do we want to accomplish? What do we want to bring to advisory, and what are we doing for the junior high? So you can see that we really focus on, in our monthly meetings, on advisory and Leader and Me initiatives that we're really, we're trying to roll out. This is an example of what we came up with at our last meeting. Our focus is on WIGs, which, if you've heard that term, is a wildly important goal, which is something we really stress for our junior high students. So we're trying to think of how could we bring them, how can we celebrate them, and how can we track them? And you're seeing up there, one of the activities we did, which is something that Jack Berkmyer helped us with too, along with Lynn, are huddle up cards. So they're question cards when a student's in advisory, they have an accountability partner, and they ask questions such as, you know, what was your biggest success for your goal this week? What was the hardest part about reaching your goal? What are some of the lead measures that helped you the most? These are questions that spark conversations in our advisory to really get the kids thinking about their goals and what they want to accomplish this year. And they have encouragement cards, too, what you're seeing on the right, you know, tell your partner something you admire about their effort. It's meant to focus on positivity and the goals we're setting out, which are really academic and social emotional goals for our students. What we're gonna plan to do with these goals, our WIGs, it has to do with our 4DX initiative, which you can see up here, it's gonna be a compelling scoreboard. So as they go through, they're gonna focus on the wildly important, you know, what do we really want to accomplish? We're gonna look at lead measures that will help our students accomplish these goals, and then we're gonna track them through a compelling scoreboard. So we're coming up with ideas of how we can get on our bulletin boards and in our hallways, a way of showing that we, we all set goals and we're reaching them and feel better as a junior high team, as a community, and kind of show everyone in the school, this is what we're about. And this is how we're really celebrating it. And you can see to the right, the celebration, something we'll bring to the kids too, to show them, you know, hey, we did accomplish this this year, that's worth a celebration, whether it's an ice cream party, something along those lines, to show them that they're accomplishing the goals.
And this came directly from the Core Two training that we had with Lynn. And so it's great seeing the teachers in action of kind of taking what we've shared during our Superintendent's Conference Day and now implementing it during our committees.
Absolutely. So this is something we really work on when we talk with our teachers, when we introduce it, what are the goals of our lighthouse team? You can see that we are developing student skills. You know, we've listed them on the left there, a lot of it is just organization, behavior, you know, how do we ask for help? Basic skills that the kids need, they are developing, they're 12 and 13 years old. And we always say, if we don't explicitly teach them this, how can we expect them to know it? So we work that in and really focus on that. We also focus on academic support. As Principal Lamo said, we work our MTSS structure in there. Leader and Me is a big, you know, a big part that ties all this together. And then we think about time together, you know, how can we come together as a group with some of our service projects and just, you know, bonding activities? The other thing we have here, again, going through, you know, our lighthouse committee is really what I want to emphasize. They really lead the charge on this with the team leads of how we're gonna, you know, bring this through. Now, one other thing that we do, and I will thank the guidance staff, is we've been doing guidance push-ins this year. So we've really leaned on Ms. Anderson, Dr. Muller, Ms. Marinelli to bring lessons into advisory because it ties so well into Leader and Me. Now, these could be anything, it could be organization, one was about the dangers of vaping, you know, just trying to really bring to the, to our kids what we want to focus on and have direct lessons to help them. So the guidance staff has been excellent with that too.
And the difference between now and the past with the advisory program, it lends time to actually dig into these type of topics. In the past, it's always been a challenge for our teachers because they have content that they won't, trying to really get through, but not having the time to do that. Or, all right, well then I'll have to push that math lesson to another day. So it does not impact our content area now when we're delivering such important lessons that we feel are essential for our middle schoolers.
We've also really worked on teaming events. So some events we've done, Project Adventure is always a big event for our seventh grade, is they come together as a group. You know, we'll see in a little bit, the wig party, the field trips, as we mentioned, going to Brookhaven Lab. The eighth grader's gonna have the opportunity to go to Washington DC. So we really work in events like that. But it could be simple things too, coming up, the eighth grader is gonna have, basically for the holidays, a hot chocolate party, where they're gonna get together, have some hot chocolate, talk about their wigs in the cafeteria. Those are just fun bonding events, some they are in middle school, right? It's not quite high school, it should still be fun, and that's something we're really building into our community and our culture. Now, something else we wanted to highlight, we wanted to use the advisory time to really question the students. This is something that ties into our leadership, giving them student voice, and it's something that Lynn has really helped us with. So we pushed out a survey, and we asked some pretty basic questions, but one of the most important ones, I felt, is actually on the board in front of me, do you have an adult in the school that you trust? We want to have a goal, you know, as an administrative team of, every student should have one adult that they know they can go to with anything and trust. And this is showing here, we have about 75%, which is a pretty good number, given that they're 12 and 13, but it also kind of guides our work moving forward of how can we reach the next, the other 25%? So Sal and I were talking about some initiatives we'll work through, and we have some plans on, you know, what we call two by tens, which is something Jack Berkmyer gave us, of, you know, meeting every student on that 25% for two minutes for 10 days, just to really giving them, you know, give them that trusted adult. And this is part of the positive effective teaming. You're seeing here, another question is, how welcome do you feel in our school? About 86% said we do feel welcome, which is a big number for us. We asked them, how safe do you feel in our school? 80% said that they feel safe, which is big. And again, the other 20%, now we can dive in advisory and find out, is there something we're missing? What, what would you do, what can we help you with? Another question we asked is, how respected do you feel in our school? And again, our number was about 76% of the kids saying, yes, I feel either extremely respected or very respected. And now we can dive in to find out with the other 24, is there something we can do? Like, how can we make you feel more comfortable? But this data has been really, really, you know, effective for us to dive in. And one of the best questions we have is just, do you feel like it's a successful year? And about 90% of our junior high respondents said, yes, I think this is going really well, which again, is really a nice number for us to show that everything we're doing is working and they feel successful. We always look at them and consider them a success, of course, but it's nice when the kids consider themselves a success. That's really part of our initiative. We also have service opportunities. As Mr. Lamo mentioned, we did things like breast cancer awareness, where they're raising money for Positively Pink, which is a foundation a lot of our teachers work with. We're writing letters to veterans in November. We're writing positive notes to teachers just to spread positivity through. And we have a lot more upcoming opportunities. We're gonna leverage our team structure to do things like fundraisers and really let the kids dive in and, you know, impact the community in a positive way. You can see here, that's the food drive, a picture of, we actually had a lot more, that was early on, where they're bringing a lot of canned goods in, which, again, was a really nice touch for our students to feel like they could impact the community.
You walk down the halls now, I tell, you can feel it. You know, in the past, we've always strove for it. And I could tell you now, it is a different feeling in our junior high area. It's just the way the kids are, their interactions, how the teachers are in the halls, their conversations with students. It's just so impressive to see where we were and where we've become today, and it's really impressive. And it's a testament to the people wearing all these wigs right now. Because, you know, they have, they've bought in hook, line, and sinker. They've been the ones to really build the connections with the students. They've been the ones to say, what's gonna work for our kids? What's gonna make a difference for our students? So here is our wig party, where our teachers went over, how do you, what is a wig, and how do you create the wigs? And they encouraged our students then to look at their report card scores and create their own wigs based upon how they did after the first quarter. So just impressive work. And Mr. Kaka Valley, I also have to thank, he has spearheaded a lot of the work with our lighthouse committee. He has been boots on the ground with our seventh and eighth graders, really working to really create an experience for them that is memorable, fun, and exciting at middle school. And I appreciate the work that he's done throughout the time here as well.
And again, you know, Sal mentioned, we have an outstanding... And again, you know, Sal mentioned, we have an outstanding team in the middle school. If you ever want to come by, check in on a lesson. We have really great teachers down there who are focused and have the right mindset for 12 and 13-year-olds. It should be a different experience and we're working really hard to make it. So again, we appreciate all the work that they're doing from our gen ed to our special ed, our special area teachers all the way through. I think they've created a really nice environment. We still have a lot of work to do, but we are definitely moving in a good direction.
Yep. Any questions?
No.
I do.
Go ahead. Go ahead. I do. Do you, certainly, the success of this is because you're in this building now. There's no getting around that. I mean, it's making a big difference. Both of our assistant principals, third, I guess we have three of them, making a huge difference in what's going on here. But do you think the fact that these kids are coming to you since they've had lighthouse and they've had, they have an experience in it, that they're buying into moving on and progressing through this? Do you think that has any influence on it?
Absolutely. I think the work, you know, the tireless work that we've seen, whether it's South Street and, you know, being named the lighthouse school and all the work they're doing, the elementary schools are providing us with really outstanding kids, the community gives us the outstanding kids, of course, but they bought in and, you know, they're hearing the message and it's helped us to not have to reteach everything, we build upon it. And so that foundation of elementary school is what lets us have such a successful junior high and we're hoping to pass it on to the high school as well and keep stacking up experiences for the kids where we really focus on turning them into leaders. And I think that'll be a great experience as they go to the high school.
Do they come to you with the same habits? Are the habits, it's all the way through school?
All the way.
That's interesting because you start it in kindergarten and then you move it all the way up to high school. It's the same goals, only on a different level.
And I will say, I've told Sal too, I think a lot of times myself and some of the teachers wear the cap, the kids are much better at this than we are and sometimes we're catching up to them. So again, that's a credit to our elementary school. I know Mr. Fabian's over there in a new role, but he did a great job as well. We try to make sure with Lynn that we're being trained so that we're not the cap or the limit on what they can achieve because we are the ones usually trying to catch up.
And I think the best thing is that the teachers hear from the elementary teachers. You know, our teachers are collaborative. So just in the event that we had here, you get to see the conversations between our middle school teachers and the elementary school teachers. And, you know, even for our teachers who are in our building, who have children in the elementary schools. And when they see those, they are sharing that positivity with other people. And they really see the efforts that are happening throughout the entire district. And I think that's what, you know, that positive talk about like, this really helps kids and these are like common sense things that help kids. It changes the dynamic of conversation and it'll let people buy in more. So I think that's really what helps move this forward as well.
And so now, once we finish junior high, we'll move on to high school with, we'll go on to the next piece after that.
My planning is already taking place.
Okay.
I do have a question. One, I think this is great, I really do. The survey questions that we sent out, was that done this year?
Yes.
And I'm assuming it was anonymous?
Yes.
So when you talk about the, what was it, you called the two and 10, two minutes every day for 10 days?
Yeah.
How do you determine who we're having those conversations with?
So this is where we rely a lot on the teachers. So we're going to try to tap in and have them, you know, have follow-up conversations. A lot of it would be general saying, hey, you know, if anyone feels that they don't have a trusted adult, let's try to get, you know, you're always welcome to come. We're looking for the kids to really approach us so they feel comfortable. A lot of the conversations we have too, is I'll talk to the team leaders and be like, what are we seeing here to make sure kids, we can identify that maybe aren't so, you know, so invested in raising their hand or being part of speaking up? We can kind of get to them as well. But the two by tens would go for all the students, too. Even if they say they have a trusted adult, it's a really good practice to have another adult check in and say, hey, we're just going to talk to you again, two minutes for 10 days and then rotate through and our goal is to hit everyone.
And our team leaders also had an experience with, not only team leaders, but our teams had an experience with Jack Berkmeier, who actually had a really unique activity, had every student's name on an index card. And each teacher went through and divvied up the cards so that this way they ensured every single student had a touch point, every single teacher had a touch point with a student, who that was and it was there. So they owned those students to ensure, like, I'm going to try to build a further relationship. And many of the times, the teachers are, as they're going through the cards, they're like, oh, I already have a good relationship with them, I'll take that card. So as they go through it, they're looking to build positive relationships with those students who maybe, hey, no one has a touch point with these kids as they went through all those cards. Who are those names right now that really doesn't have that connection? And so it really identifies like, oh, we got to all do a better job for those kids specifically because right now, none of us know them to the degree like, you know, what sports they're in or what clubs they're doing or what are their activities they're doing at home. So it's a really good exercise and we have them do it during their team leader meetings, too.
That's great. And the plan is to do it again and repeat that and hopefully we'll be able to track the progress and that number will shrink and that's how we'll be able to judge it for having the impact we're looking for.
So when's the next time you do these type of survey questions? Is it once a year?
No, we're looking for once a quarter, honestly. As you can see, our advisory does have a lot in there, but if we could get once a quarter, I would give it even a couple of times a quarter, as long as the teachers don't kill me for asking. But we want to get a lot of data points because the more data we can get, the more confident Sal and I can say that, yes, this is working. Our goal is to make sure that 100%, is close to 100% has a trusted adult in the room. That to me is one of the most important questions we asked.
And is every teacher in the building involved in this, in the junior high?
So are, we've focused on bringing some of our ancillary, so your tech, family consumer science, Spanish, into the fold now because now they've gone through training this past November. So we've been planning on bringing them into the fold. And so that's where other touch points of like, what connections do they have? Because some of these students have connections beyond our core teachers. So again, our challenge is time with some of them. And so they don't have some of those common periods during those team leader meetings. So for those specific situations, we would have to cover those teachers to bring them in. And it's been in the works with Mr. Caca Valley at this point.
Good. Thank you.
No, I just want to say thank you. The presentation I thought gave everybody a good taste of the types of things that are happening in seventh and eighth grade, really trying to bring that middle school philosophy to our students because those adolescents are different creatures than sixth graders and then from high school students. And I, and all this work is really helping them feel like they have a place. Specifically, the fact when you went through the presentation, you talked about the culture and the academics and they're working specifically on their goals and the plans they're putting in place to achieve, to achieve their goals. And along the lines of what Mr. Davis said, I really liked that as part of the presentation, you shared with us what the students are saying. A lot of times, we'll talk about, oh, how things are going, I think it's going good. You know, a lot of times, you know, we hear that a lot. I've been known to say, we think it's going good, we hear it's good, you know? Well, now we know it's, you ask the students and there's spots where it's not as great as you want it to be, you know, that you want to work on it. And I think that's fantastic and keep up that great work. You're doing a great job. And the enthusiasm of the staff is incredible. I do want to share and remind with the board and the community that part of the bond ties into the identity of the middle school. So the, some of the construction that's going on is we're putting two classrooms that will be for the art classes in the area where the seventh and eighth grade students are. They are not, they will not be down the hallway here where they currently are. So they'll be where the seventh and eighth grade is also tied into that. Identity is our tech classes are going to be built where the seventh and eighth grade students are. And it may sound silly, but we're also adding a restroom into the junior high side of the cafeteria. So there won't be a reason for the junior high students to go to the high school side of the cafeteria because they will be having their own. So there's still more to come on this and keep up the great work. It's fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. And there's some more great things going on in this building that we're going to be hearing about, specifically with our work-based learning program. So I'm going to ask Mr. Alamo, our principal, who you already met, and our assistant principal, Mr. Franchi, are you part of this as well?
Yep.
Come on up. And our guidance counselor, Ms. Anderson, is going to tell us about something we're trying to get off the ground, create new opportunities for our high school students.
Again, thank you again for this time. I'm extremely passionate about what I'm going to talk about here because I think it is, we talk about common sense. This is common sense for our students and I really think our Board of Education is going to enjoy hearing about what this opportunity will mean for our students as they move throughout our high school and as experiences for beyond. So I want to thank the two right now, both of these people here, they've been with me in this endeavor since we've started talking about this and regards to not only attending professional development, but spending countless hours meeting with me to discuss, you know, what are the impacts of this? Can our students have this? So, and so we're going to today talk about work-based learning. And to give you a good example of what work-based learning is, is a quote from New York State here, which basically it enables students to see firsthand how the things that they're learning in our classrooms, that academic knowledge and technical skills are utilized throughout our world. All right? This is what makes education come alive for our students. They get to see the transition. So it is about seizing an opportunity that students have to give them an advantage to think about their future. It connects academics and practical workplace things that are occurring. It not only talks about the awareness of items for work-based learning, awareness of careers, exploration of careers, and we do a lot of this already. But it also now is going to take a new place of having students experiencing going out into the field of work, whether it's through internships or actually paid jobs and receiving credit for it. And so this kind of came about with our review of Portrait of a Graduate. And in the work our Blue Ribbon Commission did with one of our students actually, who was in a BOSI's program, who was on that commission, one of the things that they focused on is ensuring access to internships and work-based learning opportunities for students. And we see it as they are developing these new regs for Portrait of a Graduate, that they want to give students opportunities outside of our classrooms for different experiences. And for us, we have to be able to take advantage of this. And it's, and we see it when, the things that are we doing. So I can give you an example of, you know, Dr. Passalt had an archaeologist here for our students recently. And we, and so the archaeologist, who is a parent in our community, came to speak to some of our students and give an experience of what life is like as an archaeologist. And so we do these things, and I could name countless of other people who've come in and speaks, and spoke to our students. And so it provides the awareness. These are awareness things that our counselors do on a daily basis. These are exploration opportunities to have an understanding of what are the different jobs that are out there. But one of the things that I'm highlighting on the slide here is what we need to do more of is in that bottom role. We need to create that workplace learning area to give students that opportunity to experience it there. It's one way of talking about it, but seeing it, participating in it is a whole different game. And we do have a lot of our students who are doing this already. What's unique about the workplace learning opportunities in New York State is they give you a variety of them. And so we dug in and started to take a look at what would be best for our students here at ESM. And what we noticed is the General Education Work Experience Program would probably tie the most closely with what the needs of our students are. It is a registered, credit-bearing New York State program. So if students go to work and have that experience of, and this is non-CTE, so this means we still have our students going to BOSI's. That is, so your students will still be able to use those technical skills in those areas. But this is beyond those technical skills. This is different. So, you know, we are looking to build relationships beyond, whether it's through our town government, through different jobs that are outside, whether it's an engineering job, some students are interested in law, and so we're working with possibly an attorney to have internship experiences in different locations. With that work that they do, they can get up to two credits based upon the amount of hours that they put in. Students must be 16 years or older. We are looking to start this in their senior year right now. And they have to receive related classroom instruction from a certified work-based learning coordinator, who is sitting next to me when we did some great hiring, which is wonderful. There is legal compliance for this. There's New York State labor and safety laws that need to make sure of. We need to make sure that the locations that they are going to don't have any hazardous concerns, it's safe, the employers have some sort of workman's compensation insurance coverage and working papers from our students. Our students are going to have to make a commitment to do this and we, as a school district, have to retain records for any students who are participating in this. As I talk about all of this, the key to success is what our first steps are. And so I'm going to have Mr. Franchi talk a little bit about what is our starting point for this.
No worries. So when we went to our first professional development, the speaker said that the heart of every work-based learning committee is the compass, is the advisory board, because that serves as the compass. And we need to provide some type of direction. So we have to get our stakeholders in our community involved, those who are involved in different fields, whether it is, as Mr. Alamo said, engineering, the medical field, attorneys, so they could come in and sort of meet with us to give us a sort of an understanding of what are potential opportunities for our students in the local area, that we can get them involved in these internships. And they would be meeting with the three of us and really working closely with Ms. Anderson in terms of creating these opportunities for students. The big thing on this slide is the relevance gap, which is what we're seeing currently in education. A lot of students come into education at the high school level and they all know what they want to do next. They all know how their math class connects or their soul studies class connects to whatever career field that they eventually want to go into. And while it may never connect to their career field, this can provide some type of connection if they can get involved with some type of internship and give them some type of pathway into the future or get a firsthand experience of what they may or may not want to do. Some may want to be an engineer and then this would provide them an opportunity to see what it's actually all about. And maybe they don't end up turning out to be an engineer. But we need that advisory board put in place because those people can help us because we don't have enough of a background knowledge in that field and we can't act like we do. So the advisory board's there to help us also form these internships.
And I think the advisory board is really your connections to the community and beyond. It's connections to that opportunity. So it's hearing from people firsthand of what is real, what's happening right now in the workforce. A lot of times in other schools, what they've done is they've kind of made those decisions on like, okay, this is what we should think kids will need in this workforce and here's what we're going to do. So what an advisory board does is really gives you the opportunity to have the discussions of, no, 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 that's really not what it happens. Because it's somebody from the field, in the business, who's saying, students in this day and age, you know, they really need to know how to do certain software or program things. And if they're sharing this during our advisory board, it's giving us feedback to say, okay, well, maybe we need to do this within our school. And what we need to do for our school to ensure that when students go for this type of profession, they're going to be successful. And some of these jobs may say, you know, this could be a filter for them for jobs in the future. So they may say, yeah, bring me some of those students, because, you know, guess what? That's workforce that I am going to struggle finding right now and maybe have, you know, again, and that could be right in our Manorville community, it could be right in our Eastport community, it could be in our locations, you know, across the island. So it's really an opportunity for us to take advantage of. And without one person to coordinate this, it would be a struggle. And so Ms. Anderson has a work-based learning certificate and went for school to continue what work-based learning is, and therefore would be a work-based learning coordinator. And so she's going to talk a little bit about what that role is in her experiences so far.
So as the work-based learning coordinator, it is a multifaceted role. So overall, I will be supervising the program as a whole. And then I will also be serving as the link between the students, the school, and the employers that are involved in the program. I'll be responsible for managing all the paperwork that goes into the program, so whether that is the student applications, the student agreements, we also have a student training plan, any kind of evaluations that the employer does as well as the students, and any kind of MOAs or legal compliance documents. I will also be ensuring that each site complies with the federal and state labor laws, also conducting onsite visits, making sure the workplace is safe, so these visits will take place before the student is actually in the placement as well as during this placement. Also maintaining communication regularly with the employers and the students, making sure that the placement is successful for the student. And then a big portion of this role is networking, so really reaching out to the community, touching base with the local employers, businesses, industries, and seeing who's interested in participating in this work-based learning program, and really trying to work together to create a successful program as well as future opportunities for our students. I will be working alongside the advisory board, kind of focusing on the student training plan. And then lastly, I will be running a weekly class for the students. So everyone that's enrolled in the advisory, I mean, in the work-based learning program will have a class with me as well as their off-campus work experience.
And Ms. Anderson will share a little bit more later on on what that would look like. But, you know, one of the things that we need to do is, you know, we have to find those locations that, and have our students then apply to those locations, gather that information that we need. We conduct site visits to make sure that, what does this location look like? And then we have to, if there's any legal agreements that need to be created between us, mentor orientations, training plans, these are all ways that we would look to onboard any new employers. And this is one facet of the work-based learning. There is another facet that doesn't need to go this entail, and students can still be able to gain credit for not having this specific onboarding that we're talking about with, you have to do an MOA. Other districts, I was talking yesterday with Patrick Medford, where students who have jobs in local areas, who might not have these things, will still have the opportunity to earn credit for the job that they're in if we talk to the employer and the employer signs off on some of the stipulations that we would have to make sure that students are receiving their hours, they're participating in the work, and what their reflection is, and they're rating that student as well. So throughout the program, it's really, it can be as big as we want it or as small as we want it. And so we're starting small right now, and we're looking to grow this in the future. Student's responsibility is going to be signing those agreements. There's reflective journals that they would have to complete. Our work-based learning coordinator is making sure that all of the documents were signed and conducts any supervisory visits. Our parents have to ensure that transportation is provided. So if a student is driving there, they would have to make sure that they're gaining their own transportation, and they review evaluations of their child to see what's, you know, how are they doing in this employment? Again, it could be paid, it could be unpaid. So those are the different opportunities for students. And of course, our employer has to do their things of those formal evaluations and providing us with the supervision as well and the insurance for us. You know, it's, think about where students are right now. Students would be able to gain the CEDOS plus-one pathway with this work. So right now, you have a four plus one to graduate. Students would be able to do this as part of the plus-one for CEDOS. They would be able to get a CEDOS credential as well as future pathways for a variety of students. And we really don't know what those, the graduation measures look like from New York State yet, what's coming. But I have a strong feeling that this is going to be a strong pathway for students as well. And so, again, this is an opportunity for our kids, and I want to try to seize on it. And we need to get some feedback from our students. So Ms. Anderson asked, what are our students interested in? What do they want to do?
Yeah, so I think an important part with introducing this work-based learning program was to see what our students want, see if our students are interested in the program itself. So we created a survey that discussed their interests in the program, why they're interested in different kind of fields that they were interested in. So on that top graph, it shows that 56% of our 10th and 11th graders, we did do 10th and 11th grade just because we plan on doing it just for the 12th graders next year. So it shows that they are very interested in a work-based learning program. And then you also have the 31% that were somewhat interested. And then on that bottom little chart, it shows if they're interested in the program, why were they interested? So 45% of the students, they really want to gain that real-world work experience. And then the 22% of the students, they want to network with professionals in different careers that they find interesting. And then we did go on, and we did ask what the overall consensus of what the careers that they are interested in. So the top careers that they were interested in were arts, media, and entertainment, health sciences, engineering, and business, and finance. And then just to touch on that there is an overall interest in our students, there is also a need to improve the soft skills of our youth. Research has shown that in the younger generations, they do have a deficit in soft skills, so whether that's communication, that's leadership, that's responsibility, resilience, skills that are needed to prepare them to enter that workforce. So the goal of our program is to give our students these opportunities to go off-campus and, you know, work with professionals that they find in a career field that they find interesting and gain that hands-on experience while also strengthening their soft skills to prepare them for life after high school.
So if a student is based on hours in their work, the work location, if they complete 150 hours, they would get a half a credit. If, so, but let's say they completed 600 hours within that work environment, they can get two credits. Overall, throughout a high school career, the work-based learning guidance from New York State says they would be allowed three credits overall through work-based learning. So that would mean probably starting in their junior year and senior year. Right now, again, we're focused on just our senior year, and based upon the amount of work that they can put in. And each year, they would be able to put in almost 600 hours. That's a lot of hours, but if they choose to do that, and their work is, a lot of our students, and think about our seniors, how many of our seniors are leaving early at this point?
That was my question. I have it already written down.
So think about our seniors that are leaving early, and many of them are already leaving for jobs. Why not give them credit? They should be getting credit, and we can create the relationship with the business at that point. So a lot of this is, as Ms. Anderson shared, networking. It's networking with these businesses who are saying, hey, you have some of our students. We would love to build a partnership with you. And you know what? Next year, when they go to college, we might have some more for you. And, oh, you get, you pay? And so kids are going to be like, oh, I'm going to get a paid job, and we're now, you know, using not only as, we're almost like unemployment agencies for some of these kids. I mean, they would, I think, a lot of our students would jump at this opportunity. It is not something that's simple and easy for them. I can't just go to the job and work. There is some work that they would have to do, and there is a student training plan that we would need for them. Mr. Franchese is going to talk a little bit about what that student training plan would look like.
So it's a document that's created by the student, our work-based coordinator, and the employer, and it sort of will outline all the goals and expectations that we have for our students with this plan. Basically, their work schedule will be created, like, they'll have the goals that are set by the employer, what they're looking for their intended outcomes. We will talk about attire, punctuality, and the biggest piece that Ms. Anderson already brought up, which is the journaling. We want this to be reflective for the student, so they could sort of understand the workload that they're going to take on in their future career, and they could sort of really be honest with themselves, their employer, and Ms. Anderson as to how this is going. And that's going to be the big thing about this whole entire process, is the feedback that we get from our students, because it'll give us sort of an understanding of how we are with the employer, what the kids are looking for, what they want to improve upon, and what the employers need to improve upon with the students as well. And all of that data will help make this a way better program in the long run.
And so now that next step is, what does it look like in school to provide some of the training? So we want to make sure our students meeting with success in these occasions. So again, Ms. Anderson mentioned, once a week, students have to touch base with her. There will be an instructional piece to this. So Ms. Anderson is going to talk a little bit about our in-school curriculum, what that would look like.
Yes, so along with their experience outside of the school, they will be meeting with me one period a week. And then this curriculum, we will work together with the advisory board and different employers to find out what will be best to teach the students, just for career readiness aspects. And it will focus, focus on workplace safety, which is going to be specific for each student and their site, because every site's going to be different depending on their employer. We're going to focus on career readiness, so it could be mock interviews, employability skills, resume building, email etiquette, and professional attire for the students. And then since this is going to be a weekly period with the students, it's going to address any of those concerns or questions that they have while at their placement. So if they, you know, don't know how to do certain jobs or certain tasks at their work, we can kind of brainstorm together while in class with all the other students there and kind of help them, guide them through their placement and any questions that they have. And then we're also going to touch on like a financial literacy aspect, so we're going to work with the business teachers and kind of work and create a curriculum to tie in that financial aspect as well.
We are not the only school who is doing work-based learning. Plenty of other schools on the island are doing it. We've been talking with a lot of them. As I've just mentioned, Patrick Medford has a work-based learning coordinator, and they do a lot of this work already. And there's a lot of schools. So we have been using a lot of them to say, what works for you, what doesn't work for you? As well as, how do you evaluate the success of your program? So one of the things that we are going to do is use our advisory board to measure that success on a regular basis, have conversations. What is the, you know, current job market looking like? What type of growth do we need? Can we stretch the employer network size that we have? And as well as, what type of alignment and skills do our students need to ensure that what we're doing in our classrooms is really relating to and providing them an opportunity to expand upon, hey, I'm going to be successful in the workplace? So what we are looking for from our Board of Education is some assistance in help. If this is something that you believe in, we would love your participation. We would love to get, you know, there's a lot of MO, you know, a memorandum of agreement that would need to be given to businesses. I've already shared this, and I appreciate Mr. Fabian and Mr. Stimele and Dr. Christie, the work that they've done already to, to kind of help us guide through this as an application process that we would have to do through New York State to apply to be part of this program, as well as joining us next Monday for a breakfast at 8:00 AM, where we, you have an invite in front of you at our first advisory board meeting. It's something that we are looking to really expand upon. Word of mouth is key in our life, right? And networking and the way you've gotten jobs in the past are the same way that I've gotten jobs here. It's through word of mouth, it's through the networking, it's through those conversations. We want to teach that to our students, and we want to give them this opportunity. So we really appreciate your time. We'd be happy to answer any questions you have, and I'm sorry we went so long.
I have.
Go ahead.
So conceptually, it's great. As a mother of teenagers and young adults, I can't tell you how many conversations I've had about, well, what do I do with that degree? You know, how, what kind of, what does that mean to be this job or that job? And you have to kind of be there and do it, be in the environment to really understand what that's like. And in your example, in engineering, as a child, they have this great idea about what they want to do, but once they do it, they're like, oh, this really isn't for me. So I think it's a great way to figure out what you like and what you don't like, what your skills are. So conceptually, I think it's, it's very valuable. Logistically, I'm still struggling with how, how it would work. So a couple of questions I have. Is this intended to be, I know you mentioned early dismissal for the seniors, but is it intended to be like during the school day, after school, weekends, summers, all of the above, none of the above?
Really, it could be all of the above. So the attention is, you're still going to have the core credits that you need to get here.
Right.
As to graduate, so students. But many of our seniors have early dismissals for like an eighth and ninth period, let's say. So instead of during that eighth and ninth period, they can go to those workplaces. Students would also be able to gain that work experience after school. So let's say I take a full nine-period day, and I want to be in every one of my classes. I'm an AP student, and I believe in the, and I'm taking as much of my college load that I'd like to in my senior year, and that creates full nine-period schedule. After school, I could still participate in a work-based learning program and still be able to do that after school. A lot of places allow for weekends as well. So again, the work doesn't necessarily just have to take place during the school day.
Okay, so I guess how long a placement runs, it could vary. It could be a semester, it could be an ongoing job, it could be a seasonal job, like, so it really doesn't matter then.
Correct.
It's just the placement is, it's kind of defined by the role. So you said as an advisor, you're, I was wondering about how they were going to work this class into their schedule, because so many of them already have full schedules. So it's once, one period a week. So how do you, like, if they already have a schedule that meets, you know, they have, their classes meet every day, where do they find this one period a week to meet?
So I think our challenge will be if they, if they have a full nine-period day. Now, I went through our senior.
Ones that leave early, if they're recording.
I went through our senior schedule. I don't think I saw a student who has a class every single period for all nine periods and doesn't take a lunch. So if there is a student who's in there with doing eight periods and a lunch, during that lunch, once a week, they would come and meet with Ms. Anderson during that time period.
But you have to coordinate all the students in the program, right? Because it's a class for all people.
Correct. So one of the, one of the ideas of this would be during an early dismissal timeframe, so on one day for that week, during that seventh-period timeframe, they would have to, to meet with Ms. Anderson to go over what those work experience opportunities would be, or that class per se. So it would be a Monday on one day, a Tuesday on another time, Wednesday at another time, Thursday at another time, Friday at another time. So basically, Ms. Anderson would guarantee one period in her school day to meet at varying times based upon what our students' schedules are. And I think right now, is since we don't know what those students' schedules yet, it's hard to pinpoint when that would be.
Right.
And so, but what we're going to ask of students, and one of our goals is to put this in the course catalog, so have students anticipate, I want to do this. So we'll see for those students who say, this is something I want to venture into, and then from there, we'll grow it based upon what we see we need to create. So if it's, you know, oh, you know what, we need to build more because we have more students who are interested than expected, that's, that's a good conversation to have, and then we can kind of figure, figure that out as that problem arises, once we see what students are putting in for it.
Yeah, it's interesting, because, I mean, these kids are just so busy right now. Like, a lot of them want to work but can't work because they can't commit to a job because they have to be here after school for, you know, a season or an event or whatever. So, you know, again, logistically, I'm still kind of playing it out in my head, like, how this would work. I think conceptually, it's, it's a fabulous idea, because I think a lot of these kids, even the ones picking where to go to college and what to study, struggle with this because they don't know what these jobs, like, what it means, what it means to be an engineer or a psychologist or, you know, other than a teacher, because that's the only, you know, because they're with you all the time. They don't really understand a lot of times what those jobs are, and so I think this is great. I think internships in any form are really valuable. So I'm, yeah, I'm just very curious to see how it, how it develops and how we implement it.
I, oh, sorry, I didn't know, cut you off. The logistic part also, like, they have to make a commitment with, and they're basically, not, I don't want to say the word contract, but they're signing an agreement that they are going to make this commitment with the employer. So it's like, we're not going to have like 300 people, 300 students.
Right.
And take this on, because there's no way they're going to make that commitment. So I think it's going to be like, sort of at the start, like anything, it's going to be a case-by-case. We're going to have to really dive in deep with it and see, are they able to do it? But.
It's almost like a pilot, like, you'd have to, like you said, recruit some kids that are already working and get those employers on-boarded, because it's already, they're already doing it to kind of pilot the program and then build it from there. And then hopefully, you'll have a pool of employers where, if you have a kid who's only available on Saturdays, you'll have someone that needs someone on Saturdays, and you'll be able to bring them in. Yeah, I mean, I could, it could work. It just, it's, it's going to be a little logistically challenging.
Every district I spoke to, it's flexibility.
Yeah.
You have to be flexible in how you, and it's.
It makes sense.
There is not a lot of consistency sometimes with it, where you, because you get different employer, at one year, you're getting a lot, next year, you don't have as many, you lose employers, gain employers.
Right.
It really does vary. So it's something you have to stay on top of, which is why everyone we've spoken with has says, the advisory board is your key. The more that grows, the more opportunities kids have, and the easier it becomes for, for everybody, for, you know, the employer as well as for our students.
Yeah, I'm going to give it some more thought. I have a few ideas, maybe I'll come on Monday.
Well, maybe we'll see on Monday then at 8:00.
Okay. What are the bulk of the jobs that would count? I mean, a kid that goes and works in retail every day, that's not going to.
No, that doesn't count. It's going, they all count. It's, it's, it's the, again, so I'm going to, the term is work experience. So the experience that you get from no matter what location, you will still get credit for, because it's the experience of working. And so some of our students remember, you know, that may be a good career for them. They may be looking to go into a retail component. Maybe they're going into fashion, and it's an area that they want to go into. So every career is on the table. Every opportunity is on the table for every kid.
Okay. I have a question. I've actually a comment and two questions. I love the job readiness portion of this. The interviews, getting them set up on how to dress and how to prepare and all that. I think it's such an important life skill that that's not taught as often as it should be. So I think that's a great part of this. What's your target, or what are you seeing other districts target participation? Like, just starting out, what, what's a round number that we're looking for participation?
I need to start for next year. I'm thinking if we get 20 to 30 students, that's great, that's a success for us.
Twenty, okay, good. And then you said eventually, so we're doing seniors now, do you foresee this eventually opening up to 11th graders and?
It really depends on the opportunities. So like, I'll give you an example. One opportunity is another commitment that I would love to see our Board of Education do is to see if we would also be an employee partner. We have wonderful educators at our elementary schools, and some of our students who are maybe interested in early education. And so if we would be able to partner with some of our teachers and having our students work in some classrooms and work with our teachers as support would be a great opportunity for some kids, whether they're a senior or maybe as they're juniors. So these are, again, opportunities that I've also seen in other districts, you know, in my own, in my district, I know that they've provided opportunities for students at the high school level to go down and teach at the elementary school. There's a lot of districts that do that. But again, that is work-based learning, and that's an opportunity for our students who may be interested in early education. We could say, oh, you know what, during our dismissal time, all right, we have a bus[1768.33] We could say, oh, you know what, during our dismissal time, all right, we have a bus that's going to the elementary schools and we'll take, those students will be able to go there for an hour each day and be able to participate for an hour on each day. Again, what will they reach by the end of the year will be up to them and what they can participate in. But maybe our juniors who are interested in that will have that opportunity as well. So I don't want to limit it yet. Right now, we're saying just our seniors, but this has an opportunity to grow.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody, again.
I really want to thank you for putting this initiative forward. It's very easy in the jobs that we have to come in and let the day dictate what's going on and happening and trying to get from the beginning of the day to the end. And it says a lot to take an initiative and try and get a new program off the ground. So I do appreciate your efforts because when you get a program off the ground, it's for the students here and it's going to affect them and give another chance or an opportunity, you know, for students that, you know, exactly like you were discussing. I, you know, I thought I wanted to be a teacher. I did an internship in the K-2 building and holy smoke. It's awesome or I will never do that, you know? And then they go in and that's okay, it's okay to learn what you don't want to do as well.
Absolutely.
That's very important. Or you're doing a job where it's very difficult and you may say, well, now I don't want to do this, I want to, you know, pursue something else, have to work hard in another direction, whatever that might be. But I'm getting away from the point, which is, thank you for exploring this. The effort that you're putting in is tremendous, the trainings and the programs that you're all going to, to make the program start off right, which is, as we all know, in education is an important thing. You want to do your best to make sure that it kicks off right. And I think you're really laying the groundwork. So on behalf of the students who'll participate next year, thank you.
Very interesting. It really will be.
Yeah. All right.
Frank, you might want to partner, right?
I don't know. Okay. Next presentation, we have two more presentations. First one will go with Mr. Frank Wiz. He's going to tell us about a 1% cap that we are exceeding in special education. Give us a little bit of detail on that.
Okay, good evening, everybody. The special education department has a plethora of data points that we report to both federal and state agencies every year on a whole bunch of different demographics, on subgroups. And one of them is the New York State Alternate Assessment. And it's, the acronym is NISA, so I'll refer to it here on as NISA. And what that is, is an alternative to the New York State 3 through 8 testing, okay? We have a subgroup of students here that we educate that are considered to have significant cognitive disabilities and those students are unable to participate in the 3 through 8 assessments. And what they do participate in is what's called the New York State Alternate Assessment, the NISA. So with the Every Student Succeeds Act, or ESSA, it limits the total number of students with significant cognitive disabilities who are assessed statewide to 1% of the student body, okay? And that number is based largely off of what's considered to be nationally, the number of US citizens or US people living in the United States who are significantly disabled. So they try to match that number and then what they're saying is that, well, within any school district, that should match. You shouldn't have more than 1% of your students participating in the alternate assessment testing. And while the states can't, they can't prohibit districts from exceeding that number, if you do, you have to justify why it is that you did exceed that number every year. So for the 24, 25 school year, ESM did exceed that cap in the following areas. For the ELA testing, it's 1.66%, also for the math, it was 1.66%, and then for the science assessment, it was 2.57%. Okay, so what's the cause of this? And it's a little, it's not so straight because they don't just take a straight calculation of what is the total population of students in the school district, which is 2,666, and then use the number of how many kids in your district are alternately assessed, which currently it's 38. So you would think you take the 38 students, you divide it by the 2,666 and you would get your number of alternately assessed students in the district. That's not quite how it works. What they do is they look at how many students per grade took the general ed assessment and then how many students took the equivalent alternate assessment and they do the math, they calculate it that way. That's why when you look at the numbers, we've got 2.57% in the one area and the 1.6% in the other two areas. We didn't change the number of alternately assessed students that we have in the district. So how are we getting almost 1% higher in the one area versus the two? It's because of the way the state calculates the numbers. We also, one of the things is the opt-out rate impacts that as well. I've heard Dr. Christie speak about that and I know he spearheaded a district effort to have an increased participation in our ultimately, in our generally assessed students, but that's another impact on it. So just quickly, if you look at it, that, those three bar graphs, that's the state calculation, that's our official numbers. Again, it's the ELA, the math is 1.66 and the science is the 2.57. If you, there's other things we're going to go through also, but if you also include our ESM calculation, if you do the straight number calculation that I gave you, the 38 students that are alternately assessed and you divide that by the 2,666 students that are in district, we really have a 1.43% of our students alternately assessed taking that test. So we do exceed the cap, but just slightly. That's like one or two students. And furthermore, we cross-contract and we feed students from other school districts. And a lot of times those schools, those students that come here are alternately assessed students coming here specifically to participate in our programs. So if you remove those students from the number, we're at 1.13 across the board. So that's, that's the numbers where we stand. And again, another part of the root causes, we serve as a feeder district for East Maritza and Remsenberg, okay? We're happy to do so and we've got, we've built great relationships with those districts and we encourage them to send their students here because we do have robust programs. We currently have 12 special ed students that we take from Remsenberg and East Maritza. Seven of those students are alternately assessed, so they count into our number. Also, cross-contracts, we will cross-contract with districts and help districts on the east end that have smaller programs and might not have programs that would otherwise have to send those students to a BOSI's program. If we can, we'll take those students. We do cross-contract a student from Hampton Bays, that student is alternately assessed. So we've got eight students that we currently cross-contract from other districts that are alternately assessed. Again, there's the federal cap and that's where we are with the ELA and the math and the science. And that's our gap or difference that we report to the state. Yes, we are over in our calculation, but I do want to ensure the Board of Education and the community that we use data-driven determinations. We are well-versed in who qualifies for alternate assessment. We do not make those determinations arbitrary. We follow all state guidelines and we follow, there is a state guidance form and that's at the CSE and that is gone through with the parents by the chairpeople and the committee when those decisions are being made. And we make sure, again, that everything's valid, documented, parents are informed, all the official notifications and mandated notifications go home. So we strictly adhere to Part 200 regulations and IDEA. So we are involved in a corrective action plan. The state did change it. We used to just have to write a justification, then we were done and we could kind of explain what I just explained, why we're exceeding the cap. This year, they added another layer. If you're beyond the 2%, you have to participate in also a state-determined intervention. So that is something that we will be participating in, starting tomorrow. We have eight people that are going to be on that committee. There is five administrators, one CSE chairperson and one community member that volunteered to be on that committee. So we will be starting that work tomorrow with New York State. And then they'll continually monitor our progress. And again, every year, we have to report on this. So possible solutions, one way to help would be to increase our general education population that's taking our 3 through 8 assessments. And I know, again, we are currently continually doing that work to encourage parents to have their students participate in the New York State assessments, 3 through 8. The new graduation requirements may help. They're not fully rolled out yet or outlined what's going to happen, but with the potential portrait of a graduate and new pathways, there may be an avenue to, with the elimination of the regents and, again, the creation of some new pathways, have some students that are alternately assessed, maybe not need to be alternately assessed in the future. We'll see what that holds. We could lobby and we do lobby the state to adjust their calculation to kind of make it more just straight math. We've got two groups on Long Island, the Long Island Special Educators Association and the Suffolk County Special Education Administrators. Those groups often reach out to state lawmakers and state department officials to lobby for things such as this, to change the calculations. Or we could reconsider cross-contracting students, which I wouldn't recommend because it does help other students and it helps the district and enriches our own community with the students. But again, that could be a possibility to lower our NISA numbers. So the outlook for '25 and '26, based on the current enrollment that we have, we probably will be flagged again for exceeding the cap of 1%. Not by a lot. I expect the numbers to be similar to what they are now. We'll find out next year when we get our report card back from the state. And again, it exists because of the assessed denominator and how they calculate that denominator number and the fact that we are a feeder district. We are at a little bit of a disadvantage with the way they calculate that number. And we are fortunate in ESM to have a robust and full complement of special education programs and I'm proud to be someone who's involved with that and the great men and women that we work with every day that work these programs. And we are, just know that we are maintaining full compliance with New York State Education Department and IDEA. Any more questions?
I do.
Sure.
They can't make it easy, right? So these interventions, I mean, if a student is alternately assessed based on a checklist because they have cognitive disability, what interventions could they suggest that's going to change that child? I don't understand.
We're going to find out, starting tomorrow.
Is it going to be unduly burdensome on the district to try to comply with these interventions?
I don't know what their suggestions are going to be. You know, just reading from the state guidelines here, a student needs to have, these are all ends. This is a very strict threshold to meet. So the student has to have severe cognitive disabilities and significant deficits in communication and speech and significant deficits in their adaptive behavior and require a highly specialized program that facilitates the acquisition, application and transfer of skills across natural environments and requires educational supports such as assistive technology, personal care, health, medical services and behavioral interventions. So it's a very high threshold to meet.
These are not children that are going to suddenly get better at these things, so.
And, you know, largely.
My concern is, is it going to be onerously burdensome on the district to do these interventions? So I, once you learn more, I would love for you to come back and tell us what kind of interventions they're proposing because that may be something, you know, we need to write a letter, advocate whatever for. I agree with you. I wouldn't want to stop being a feeder district. I think having a robust program requires you to have students with varying degrees of need so that you can have a robust program because you can offer more services. If you start cutting back, then you can't have as many staff and it can take away from our programs.
We do. We have great programs here at the elementary level through the high school level and it is also sometimes if you build it, they will come and they come.
Yeah.
And we're happy to have them.
I mean, we've had.
Interesting.
People move into our district and they've come to me and told me, I'm over here because I know the program, yeah.
We had a gentleman.
That percentage is going to go up then.
Yeah.
We had a gentleman call one of our chairpeople from Florida last week and he wants to move to Long Island and they're calling from Florida and he's asking questions to Eastport, specifically to Eastport, for a student, for his son who has severe disabilities, so.
And are the numbers of the kids that we send out, are they considered part of this group or just those that we have in-house?
It's our in-house. I think it's our in-house because when we list our alternately assessed students in the system, the students that we send out to BOSI's, they don't show up on our rosters. They're.
So the 38 are all in-house students that we currently have in our formula? So that number stays fixed. It's not like the 38 is the 38, the top number. The bottom number, it just depends, because I was wondering why the science was so high.
Actually, the top number changes as well because they don't even count all 38. It's like for the math and the English, 14 counted and for the science, 16 counted.
Why is that?
Because it depends on the year they're in and they match it up by grade level. So the calculation is done on each grade level.
So the more kids that take regular tests.
The more it helps us.
And stop the opt-out, which we have to just keep pounding at. We've been, right.
That would help the number. That's probably, my guess, is going to be their main focus area because that's something we can sort of control, is promoting the opt-in rate on the janet assessments.
Sort of control. Well, you've, you've just got to keep pounding at the parents to let them, I mean, to let them take the tests. I mean, we're not hurting kids by asking them to take the tests, which parents think that we're putting all this pressure on these kids. It's not, we're not pressuring anybody, okay? They take a test and we have data that we can use how to fix what may be wrong in our district or what we need to improve. If they don't take the test, we don't have the data. That's been the, I know, but that's been the.
Reaching in the choir, Marion.
Right. That's been the argument forever, right?
Any other questions?
No, thank you. That was really interesting.
All right, thank you very much. All right. And then our last presentation should be our shortest presentation. But believe it or not, as much as we sometimes feel like we just opened the doors to start the school year.
I feel like we just did this too.
We're already in December and when we come back from the break, will it be at the halfway point of our school year, which means we start building our budget. So you heard from, you know, the auditor, from Cullen and Donowski, and this district is in good financial standings, that we're not getting a letter of recommendation to change that, she, you know, it was a glowing, glowing report. Part of it has to do with how we build our budget and the steps that we take and the steps that we take informing our Board of Education about how we're building that budget. So Mr. Laalbe, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Stimal. So as per our policy, every year, we have to have the Board approve our budget schedule. So I've never really done a presentation for it before. I thought I'd make it more formal and we'll present it. So only a couple of slides here. Here, we'll start, come back in five weeks. We will meet on January 14th. We'll look at enrollment. We'll have Mr. Hayes here for the FedEx Department, Mr. Avrissano here for security and I'll present the transportation budget. Two weeks later, for the fiscal stress report, which should be out from the Controller's point, the New York State Controller's Office at that point, usually comes out in late January. And that's a review of the fiscal status of all school districts in New York State, whether you're moderate, severe or in good shape. And that's how we've been the last five years. We've been in pretty fairly decent shape. The tax cap report, well, we should at that point know what the tax cap is going to be. We'll have Mr. O'Connor here for facilities. We'll have Ms. Petrenko, Dr., Ms. Petrenko, promoter for special education. We'll come back on February 11th. Mr. Layman will join us for the junior, senior high school budget. On March 4th, we'll have all four elementary school principals here, along with our Technology Department Director, Dr. King, to speak about those programs. On March 25th, Dr. Christie will present the curriculum budget. I will go over the central office budget and I'll print salaries district-wide, our impact with health insurance across the district, as well as a final look at the tax levy. Now, at that point, we will not have the very big portion of our revenues, which is the state aid. State aid won't come out until around April 1st and that's if it comes out on time. Last year, as you remember, it came out pretty late. So we just go with whatever we were projected in the state, the governor's budget, which comes out in January. Hopefully, we'll see a modest increase there. It's an election year and hopefully there'll be no tough, tough talk coming out of Albany. April 21st, we'll look at an overall review of revenues and expenditures for the budget. At that point, we should know state aid, so we'll get a good look at where we stand. The Board will vote on that budget to send it to the community. On May 6th, we'll have a public hearing, the state-mandated public hearing on that budget, which will be held here in this room. And then on May 19th, we'll have the community vote for the proposed budget, which will be again here in this room. Any questions?
So this will be on late in the agenda for you to vote on.
Correct. And we've already started the budget process, started a couple of weeks ago. All our departments have their budgets and they're building them now.
Thank you. Have the book machines come in?
No. They're going to call us when they're ready and we're going to go pick them up. The voting machines, you mean?
No, no, the book machines.
Oh, the book machines, no, they're on their way, though.
They're being shipped?
Yes.
And when do we expect them? They were expected months and months ago, so, I mean.
And when do we expect them? They were expected months and months ago. So, I mean, we approved them with the last budget.
It took a while to get the right machine that we wanted to get.
And when do we think we'll have them here?
Within two weeks.
Thank you.
What's the book machine?
For South Street and Dayton. You remember, that was last year. Thank you.
Long lead time on those suckers.
Okay.
Number four.
Mr. Laubie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Ferraro.
Do we have any public, anybody signed up to speak? No, we don't. Board committee reports. Does anybody have anything to report? Okay. I guess we go on to policy.
Want me to go?
I'll go. So we have four, five policies up for today. At the last meeting, we approved our, our records retention policy, 1120R. So this, this meeting, we decided to look at the two associated policies, two 1120, which had a little bit more to do with school records and some confidentiality of computerized information, really to make them current. Those two had not been updated in quite some time. And really, what those policies say, simply put, is that they, that we have some established procedures in the event that we're served with, with legal papers on how we will provide those and also how we retain and secure our physical and computerized records. And it also references some of the legal language around retention periods for different required documents, all things that were following in the school. Really, they weren't reviewed in a long time. Those just haven't been reviewed in a real long time. So we wanted to review them. You know, we made a few changes, really to reflect some of the current law updates, overall minimum changes for 1120 and 1120.1, but they're current, so they're up for first reading. We also put up our investment policy. This is Policy 6240. It's a policy that requires annual review. And really, what this policy is about is just how we, how the Board of Education will ensure that our funds are invested in accordance with federal, state, and local regulations. A strong policy of 6240 shows that we're committed to strong fiscal oversight and a real commitment to protecting taxpayer dollars, which is the reason for that policy. And again, you know, it really just has to do with a structured, transparent framework for all of our investment decisions and keeping our funds liquid. It protects us from unauthorized use. It protects us from mismanagement or market risk. And as you have heard earlier from our auditor report, you know, we seem to be doing a really good job there. There were some changes to that policy. Again, hadn't been, it had been not updated that recently, so it was something that we wanted to look at and kind of cleaned up. So that's up for our first reading as well. And then finally, we have, we had 8130.2 was our workplace violence prevention policy. It was relatively new. I think we approved that in 2024. And the big change in that, Mrs. Weiss's name was on there, so we wanted to replace it. After a conversation with council, it was recommended that we provided actual employee's name for this particular policy, not just the position. So we replaced it with me. That was really the only change for that one. But we also decided to take a closer look at another associated policy, 8130, which is our school safety plan policy. And that really just has to do with how we establish district and building wide safety teams, how we operate, how often, or how we meet, the things that we review, has to do with some new language that was introduced last year or the year before about taking more of a trauma-informed approach to our emergency drills. That's why you get so many parent notifications about upcoming drills. It's why we don't use actors, we don't use props. We announce drills, we follow all the regulations. So it's really along those lines. And it has a little bit of language in there about how we conduct threat assessments or how our mental health teams are established. So it really, those policies are really solid. They're things that we're doing in every building. You know, as everyone here knows, we're really committed to student safety and these policies just kind of echo that. So they roll up for first reading and we'll be looking to adopt them at the next board meeting.
Anything to vote on?
Not today.
No, these are just review. And I just would like to point out that, you know, as part of our attorney contract and retainer, we get policy services. And a lot of the language updates that we have a liaison with council that we work with. So a lot of these language updates came from the attorneys, so they've already been well-vetted. And some of it is semantic, some of it's grammar, some of it's just updating with more recent education law. Because as Mr. Fabian said, some of these policies haven't been updated since, you know, the early 2000s. And there has been some changes to education law that required us to just make some tweaks. So that's what's reflected there.
Thank you. Any acknowledgements? No? All right. We have a walk-on and we'll need a motion for it, but let me read what it is. Are we, you're not ready for it?
No, we, open items.
Voting machine?
Voting machines.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
So, as the Board of Education knows, out of nowhere, the Board of Elections in Suffolk County informed everybody from villages to fire departments, to schools, et cetera, that they will no longer be providing the service of the voting machines. We wrote a letter to county executives saying we need some assistance with this. Other school districts have as well. Superintendent's Association has met with the Board of Elections along with some other county officials, and pressure has been on them. And over the past three weeks, I say, there's kind of been like a breakthrough where some changes are taking place. At least for this school year, we even had some breaking news today. But dealing with the Board of Elections has been challenging, as much as they've been changing things. Whereas they said, you know, early on, back in October, I think they said, if you want one of the old machines, put in for it now, and then they shut the date down. We put in early, we'll be getting our machines, but the dates close down. Then we got informed last week, if you were getting the machines, we'll provide training and the training is basically tomorrow. Like, so that, it's that type of thing. So I'm going to ask Tim to give the latest update on Michelle getting trained and with regard to the machines and the newest that the Board of Elections is going to be a little bit more supportive, it sounds like.
Yes. So when we were notified that the county was offering training, Ms. Reyes volunteered to go up with one of our technicians to go and get trained on how to use the machines. It was a pretty quick training. I think your comment, Ms. Reyes, it's, you'd probably need a retraining as we get closer, which the county did say they would offer like a few days before. I think they're going to come out and, or they offered some type of update training. They didn't? No, they said they were going, no, no, there's going to be something more. They were going to help out. The crux of it is the county will send a person here the day of our vote to support us with the machines. So we're getting two machines. We have to go pick them up when they make them available sometime, probably after January 5th. We'll go up, we'll pick them up with our vehicles. Our vehicle, we'll bring them back, we'll store them here. And as we get closer to the training, they are offering something a few days before, like some type of, I would say, like, just a quick update that you make sure you know what you're doing. But they will have somebody on site. There's a cost to it. It'll be about an extra $900 for us. And that's something we used to pay every year anyway. So we'll have somebody here to help us with the machines if there's any type of issue.
What about the partitions?
We put in for five of those. I anticipate we'll get those.
Okay.
That's it.
All right. So now we're ready for the walk-on, okay? Am I right? Okay. Be resolved that the Board of Education of the Eastport-South Manor Central School District hereby denies the Level 3 grievance submitted by the Eastport-South Manor Teachers Association dated December 4th, 2025, and authorizes the Board President to provide written notice of such determination on behalf of the Board of Education. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Everybody, aye. Okay. Thank you. Now we go to consent agenda. Can I have a motion for consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Do we want to go through what these are? You want to do them? No?
Yeah, I can.
Thank you.
I'll go through them. So item one was the budget schedule with Mr. Laubie went over. Second item was approval of the external auditors' report, which we heard from earlier from Colin and Donowski. Item three deals with obsolete items that we're getting rid of in technology. Item four, our variety of contracts from local universities where we're helping, having student teachers, et cetera. And also an item from Life Touch, which is, is that our yearbook, Mr. Lemo?
That's at Dayton, Dayton's memory book.
Specifically for Dayton, that one? Okay. We have a budget transfer, item five. Also a budget transfer, number six, would specific the salaries. And seven is for some year-end clearing up specifically where, so you want to talk about those, please?
Twenty-four, twenty-five. It was a housekeeping recommendation from Colin and Donowski, our orders who are here tonight. It's a revenue, it's a budget neutral. Just they want us to record an expense we paid as related to the payoff of a ban.
Okay. We also have a change order for VSC, $20,384. That's for...
Alarms.
Okay.
In the addition.
This is specific alarms to the addition with dance studio is in the fitness center and the wrestling room and the weight room to get fire alarms into those sections of the building, which is all part of a new addition, which is not done yet. It's being worked on. So we have fire alarms everywhere we're supposed to, except there, but it's not done. Next item is personnel. Do we have those, Ms. Reyes? All right. So personnel, first one is resignations as listed. And we have people for leave of absences. And then we have appointments as listed. We have per diem substitutes. And we have de-civil service appointments. And we have some extracurricular activity appointments for... And interscholastic appointments as listed. Supplemental pay, quite a few there. And number seven, our student teacher observers, some student teachers, some observing classes. And then finally, change in hourly rates to reflect the changes that are coming up for the new school, the new year. This is happening, up to $17 per hour. And then tenure appointment for Mary Claire Arena. That's that.
Yep. Oh, with student services?
Yes, student services. Do you have it?
Okay. We acknowledge and accept the decisions already made by committees on special education. ESM Pride. Anybody have anything for ESM Pride?
I got, a couple of us were at the first responders luncheon today, breakfast, rather, at Dayton Avenue. It was just really nice to see. I always love those events. It brings me back to being in the building a little bit last year. Get to see a really, really good group of people. It's just nice, nice time.
Anybody else? Just want to remind people that stuff of school is next week. So everybody loves to go. If you haven't had the opportunity to witness what goes on, it's in the very, very, very early in the morning.
Thursday, Mr. Lemo? So it'll be this...
What time?
Starts early, but as early as you want to get there. News 12 has said that they will be here. We can't guarantee it like anything, but they traditionally do show up when they say they're going to be here.
Maybe for you.
Yeah.
One of the other things, went to the Tuttle Avenue Thanksgiving show, the first graders put on, I mean, they do such, yeah, they do such a great job. It really is a nice, it's really a nice show that they put on every year.
Even, even the scenery that they do, it's just adorable.
No, it really is a great show.
It's cute. And just a reminder, we talked about the work-based learning. If, you know, you're available or you know of somebody that could be helpful, maybe you know somebody in the community, out there in TV land, or, they don't say that anymore, or any of the board members, if you, you know, somebody who you think would be helpful to our students that has a business, you know, and businesses are, you know, they're not just traditionally a brick and mortar, what you would sometimes think of. It may, you know, it may be a different type of a business where somebody has, you know, they may, it might be a lawyer and they don't, you know, they're not necessarily a storefront, but they have an office. And you think that they would be somebody good for an internship or for some work, recommend and let them know that it's on this Monday, December 15th, 8 o'clock, that they could call the school and we could direct them to assist us and help out. So, any thoughts you have on that? Would be great. Anybody who wants to join us, it would be great. That's it.
That's it. Thank you very much.
Have a great evening.